We're good to start?
I'm worried about that speaker, but it's catching everything. In a second, I just want to make sure. If whoever's in the audience, no one right now, but. We need to start with the last meeting.
Okay.
Can you start the meeting?
I just want to make sure that the public on Zoom has sound. So I see captions, I'm assuming they do.
Okay. Well, I'm going to start the meeting.
I'll second.
Member Dobroski?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Cyril?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, well, welcome to Village Pittsburgh Historic Preservation Board meeting of Monday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty five. We do have seven items on the agenda and then three member items. Once we conclude through those, does anybody on the board have a reason to recuse themselves for any of the items on the agenda?
I do not.
I do not either. So before we get started, the mayor and I had a conversation. This is kind of more for the public too, that sitting on our board, Virginia Cyril, this is most likely her last meeting on the Historic Preservation Board. And the mayor and I wanted to make a public memorandum to Virginia Cyril for the decades of service to our town and to our, more importantly, to our village in historic preservation. So we have a memorandum, I'll read it, we got the mayor. Okay. So Virginia, Village of Pittsburgh memorandum of recognition to Virginia Cyril. Whereas Virginia Cyril has demonstrated dedicated service in the field of historic architecture, making significant contributions to preservation and enhancement of our community's architectural heritage and whereas through her expertise, Virginia has played an integral role on the Historical Preservation Board, advancing the quality of our historic preservation efforts. And whereas Virginia's contributions have deepened our community's appreciation for the importance of preserving its historic character for future generations. And now therefore being resolved that I, Elizabeth S. Farm, Mayor of the Village of Pittsburgh, with concurrence of the Historic Preservation Board, present this memorandum of recognition to Virginia Cyril in honor of her decades of service and valuable contributions to the field of historic architecture. We express our sincere gratitude on behalf of the entire village community.
Thank you, Virginia.
Since we are doing such things. This is an updated version of a book that was published by the Landmark Society many years ago, Reget Raffister. This is updated with more current information. Steve Jordan wanted me to deliver this book to the Preservation Board.
Thank you very much.
Should go in the library.
All good? Thank you, everybody.
All right, let's go.
Okay, first application tonight is twenty South Street, Virginia D. And if you guys want to come on up here, we need more chairs, we need to get more chairs still.
I'm gonna have a little issue with my back, so I'm not gonna be able to go around a little bit.
Okay, no problem. All right, so you guys want to introduce yourselves and who you are and your names for us?
Sure, Barry Thornton, the homeowner.
Okay, yes, I accorded on the actual record, then Bob Roy is the contractor.
All right, perfect. So we received your application that everyone had a chance to review the actual materials that were provided.
Yes.
Again. So in this application, we have really, well, technically, three things to discuss. We have the addition to the house. We have the addition, well, demolition of your garage, and then we have a new construction of the garage. So instead of everybody jumping around, which one do we want to start?
So there's a demo of a piece of like a mudroom.
Oh.
House as well.
Thank you for pointing that out, so.
So.
Yeah.
It's the mudroom interior?
Yeah, it's enclosed, right?
It's enclosed, it's this thing right here, so this is going to be demoed, and then a two-story.
All right, so let's, let's start with the house. Let's start with the house.
Okay.
And most importantly, we'll start with the proposed addition to the home and then moving there.
Right now, we have an existing turn entrance, which was the mudroom, which was to include a bathroom. So the intent would be to remove that and to expand it by four inches and then go up two floors to provide a master bed. A bedroom, floor of the master bedroom suite that is upstairs on the seventh block. So the addition is going to match the house with same type of side, same type of window, so the character of the house will be maintained. That's probably not fair, it's not very much square footage, but it could.
So the footprint against the house is the same, but you're bumping it out by forty four inches.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to put a multiple phase up there for the master bedroom.
Yeah.
There's a few things that regarding the west elevation. The windows that you have proposed, since this is facing South Street. The casings should all match.
Yeah.
And we should talk about the mountain pattern that you guys have called out as well. Just a few things that jump out right off the bat are specifically those.
There are the windows that have no markings on the side of the house, so we probably play the next to main house, which is facing the street way.
Okay. And you'll match the casings and all the same case details?
All the same thing, yes, all the same thing, yeah.
Okay, that, I mean, that'll be a very important detail to keep with. And it's not shown here, so we just really want to make sure that that's not a statement made by the wrong case that's being.
The intent was to make it, yeah, just in construction, but it was formed to the.
We're looking at the west elevation right here.
I am talking about those ones, yeah.
Okay, yeah, because these, because these ones are matching.
Exactly.
Right. Okay, yeah, the casings don't show that they're the same, but you're saying they're planted to be the same, yeah.
These, these windows are.
Yeah.
What type of windows are these, double hung?
Double hung, yeah.
They're not, they're not drawn, it's double hung.
They weren't, they weren't the bathroom windows. Yeah, that should be double hung.
So you're saying that they should match, yeah, south elevations windows?
Yes.
These are here?
Yeah.
To be right here.
That kind of a closed window.
Any, any window should match, and that was the.
Yes.
If you please, the art test was not, you know, a way to.
The cat, the cat door.
Is the, is the whole building demolished, original, or was that a later add-on?
No, there, there was an addition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. All, all of the shutters from every elevation are incorrectly mounted. They may be sized correctly, but they are not mounted correctly, they should be. They need to be mounted here.
Right.
So they.
That's, even.
That's the. No, no, that's not, that's twenty.
This is. So. It would not be.
Yeah, this one's nine better.
Yeah, so that's a good point, we.
I might, I would, personally, I would not insist that all the shutters be remounted correctly. But I would insist, insist that the new shutters and the new windows be mounted correctly.
Yeah.
You know, you understand what I'm talking about? They need to be mounted to the interior of the casing, because shutters close into the window opening.
Those are not, they're not real shutters.
It doesn't matter whether they're real shutters or not, they should be sized appropriately and mounted appropriately.
So you, you don't just.
Or just locked up, or just locked up.
This question, I think there will be, they will probably have preference, right?
Yeah, I'm sure, they definitely change.
Yeah, you wouldn't want to mismatch what's already there.
No. It was done, it was, in fact, the window was already done, a few changes in the back, for the background. Where the windows are not even close to what the front door is.
Yes, I noticed that.
You know, it's, it's pretty.
But they're not being, they're not being put forward as anything other than existing. If they're existing, they're existing.
There's, well, in fact, two of them on the side, one's holding it. Yeah, the picture, the four, the four sash, the four, well, one mountain there, in fact, in quote.
Yeah, well, I can see that there's a mix. But again, if these windows get replaced in the future, the shutters might get replaced in the future, and there would be an opportunity to remount all the shutters correctly if you get new windows, I don't know how old the windows are, typically, we don't approve of replacing existing wood windows, but there are occasionally good reasons for replacing windows, and if windows are being replaced, then we would have them replaced with wood.
What siding are you guys going to use?
Bevel hardwood, you know, to match existing.
And then same, obviously, with the rest of the trim, you're all, just to match.
I did match exactly what we can.
Okay. Well, that, that was my main question, were the two windows on the west elevation? The south elevation looks fine, I think it matches the rest of the house, it's a, it's a good height for that addition also, it's not matching the existing roof lines, it's, you know, subsidiary to the rest of the house, so I have nothing wrong with the south elevation or any comments to make in that, nor with the east, and the east elevation isn't even really viewable by public eyesight, so we don't even have to talk too much about that unless someone wants to make a comment on the east elevation.
No, just, I guess, a question about what, what, what type, what, what's the material for the windows to be planted?
Well, right now, the existing windows are some wood and some metal, right?
I actually, I really haven't looked at all the sashes to see what they are. They were, I think, a couple of them are, are vital, I don't think they're bad. Not the one, we're, we're looking, we're talking to now SRS, but being a wholesale about if they can pump on the window that's potentially the same or very similar to the existing window that we can use, so we're in the process of doing it.
Okay, so that's great, and that's good to know that process is in place. Before a complete certificate of appropriateness could be issued, we just have to call that window out, make a model.
Actually, I will bring up, her type or green, you know.
Okay.
So you can look at it.
And then Alexandria has a list of windows that we've approved and used in additions and in restoration projects.
We, we.
So if you need anything.
Project on Elm Brook, that we're, window, required windows years ago.
Okay.
We're pretty familiar with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, just point clarity, are you asking from a perspective of like, you're comfortable approving the demo and build constructions of the addition, but absent the spec sheet for the windows, which we improve later? That's right. Yeah. It's on the same page, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions on the addition?
Nope. I have any issues with the demo either, like, not originally. I have the, I have some sort of thing.
Okay, then let's move on to the garage. Should we, can we break up the votes? If we want, I don't want it finished, and they don't have the windows, so I would be bothered.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, the conditionally, the replacement for the demo.
Correct.
Additionally, granting, so there's at least two motions.
Yeah. Very, right, you've proven also the demolition of the.
I do.
Does it make sense for us then to look at the demolition of the garage, vote on demolition? Or no, we have to vote, yeah, I guess.
Yeah.
Vice versa, with the addition then.
Yeah. Okay, so let's, let's talk about the garage. It has a little bit of an asymmetrical look to it from, on the west elevation, and the size and scale is a bit outside of what's soft on the eye, as well as what is historically accurate to housing, the size and style, is there, so can you explain the reasoning and design structure for the garage addition?
Well, I think the owners wanted to have an overhang where the two entry doors are to the side of the garage.
Okay.
So instead of going again with the other way, because they would have been a little taller than the, than the roof.
Right.
Which is deeper, we decided to offer a long way by extending the trusses, which is less expensive at times, but.
Yeah. I just had a, a, a few ideas, I mean, we can talk about the. Is, is this new garage door still a single garage door?
Yes.
Okay, is it going to match where the garage door is now on the existing garage?
No.
Okay.
So you also have modification of the driveway that's going to be.
No, I thought it would stay, it's wider than the garage itself. We, the garage is in the position where the old one was, so we kept some of the existing foundation. It's very close to the lot line, so we had to add a garden there and to keep it where it is now. So conserve some money and, you know, be a little more creative, but save as much of the existing foundation and slab as possible.
The driveway is not being obstructed, staying where it is. If it is, it'll be the exact width that is up. Yeah, but right now, there's no plan to move the driveway.
Okay, I'm, I'm just looking at where the existing garage is now, and the driveway is centered on the existing garage door. And then this pit bit here, the garage door is moved, is centered on the new garage door. But the driveway is.
It's not, there would be, I don't think there'd be any cars parked in there, they're only use it as an exercise.
Okay, but, but then you're going to have a driveway and then a garage door that's not centered on the driveway.
It's probably a matter for the next.
Probably part there, but no, we're not.
Well, I don't, I understand the need for an overhang at the doors. So I don't, and this is a, this is a detail that I think I've seen on barns and sheds and stuff like that, an extension of the roof, so that you have an overhang at the door, there are ways to do it. There could be a separate little, little roof over the doors.
Uh, yeah.
No.
Am I missing something? Do I give a measurement to the peak of the gable?
No, there's no. There's no.
Yeah, that's all.
About seventeen feet, there's a, what's that? The garage, seventeen feet. It's nineteen feet, twelve inch.
Is there a height, is there a zoning requirement?
Yes, we already cleared that.
Height, it means their height, nineteen feet is within a height requirement?
Yeah, they got a variance, they got a variance over the twelve foot requirement, or the nineteen foot.
Okay.
And the height of the gable is just, is there a second floor up there, or what's up there?
No, it's just to keep the measures up on.
That's what I'm wanting, yeah.
Basically, the width of the garage, the whole width determines that height based on the pitch of the existing house, so you're as close as matched as possible.
Yeah.
Is it, is it concerned to look from the, the South Street side, the opening?
Yes. And also just like, you know, relative to, I mean, what, what, do you know the ages on the existing garage?
Well, it looks like the driveway is.
That's my hesitation, honestly, it's just, from a scale perspective, it's so much greater, yeah.
Member Dobroski, on the blue sheet, I, there were some dates of last work. I can't remember if the garage was there, but you can check. It wasn't there. You say it, okay.
With that.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not like explicitly called out, like approvals. Yeah, it's at least a little bit. Yes.
Yeah, normally that page should not have anywhere.
But if the look of the garage, the overhang is that concern, you can always extend that from the one just to the end of the truss. So they would actually brush the window from the wind coming from the west side, and it would make the garage look as a different structure.
So the, the main reason for the height is to match the, the gable of the house and to provide the overhang.
Yes.
What are your thoughts on taking it one step further in, in bringing out a little bit more design character of the garage and put a, come to look at this, I know it's just an acting drawing, but what are your thoughts on doing something like this, extending out like a mini, like keeping the symmetry of the garage equal? And then bringing out a little.
A little.
Yeah, and then, and then have a little.
Like a wing.
Yeah, almost, yeah, like, and that might give it just, give it more of an overhang, so you're not just sitting under the, the roof by what, two feet overhang? So if you just wanted to sit out there, that's the main reason of this garage design.
I don't think it was going to be, you know, sit out, so they're going to be underneath that, that's just more to keep the snow and, for the opening for the hand doors more than anything else.
Yeah, it's actually, the other thing is really more like garage candy.
Yeah, it's not anything that's, you know, nobody's going to be sitting out there.
Okay, so drinking, no, it's. It's not an area that you guys are trying to enhance all of it.
I don't think it's three feet, is it?
Yeah, it's very.
It looks like it's two feet, it's determined to scale.
Well, that should be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a couple of feet.
It's basically, it's not the wall, the only thing to be outside would be the garage door.
Yeah, and usually the trusses, you know, don't want to do any stick though, usually the trusses is like a six twelve, for example.
Yeah.
You know, then that's where you get the height and, and the width that kind of matches the existing gable on the house and the existing gable on the, on the garage. Garage right now is only eleven seven or something like that. And so, you know, so you go up five feet and you're, you're you're at that six twelve pitch, you know.
Yeah.
It's not much difference.
So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is there any option to move to a something that is a little bit more symmetrical, I mean, do you want to kick it out on the, on the right side, like the west elevation as well, or just to bring the pitch of the roof over and match up with the garage door?
No.
That's really what it is.
We could center the garage, I mean, the, the only center of the garage, we had to leave it off of that, but aesthetically, I don't know, that's, we could extend it, we could, you know, block off that front and move the garage over so that it would look like it's garage.
I think that the option was that would be, if you kept, if you kept the garage, then with well, maybe, if you kept the garage the same way, have the roof up and on both ends of the garage, and then for the other, I mean, step it back, maybe a foot or so, and then even keep the length, so it looks like it was done.
I think it's, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Is it, is the, do you know if the pitch of the gable or elevation matches the house?
It looks like it when it's.
Yeah. And so, yeah, we're just, we're just blowing it up because we're really making a large subject. Basically, I, I, that's at least, you know, because, I mean, we're so much more of a design board than anything, and it's just, that's what's kind of it, it seems like a, a huge enlargement for such a minimal function. Yeah.
Yes.
You know, and I just feel like there could be better ways to attack it to maintain the original feel of the garage, even potentially the same footprint. But just when it becomes almost a, a second house on it, just to have the same pitch of the gable. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, we could extend, extend the front wall to kind of make a blind wall that, you know, you couldn't see the side, but then we could center the gable, and then we could move to center the garage door.
There are, there are many, many ways we could deal with this, also, please keep in mind that this, the existing stud walls and the base already exists in black, it's not the greatest, in the greatest condition, so eventually, that wall is going to fall.
Well, that, that is an important detail in terms of demolition, but that exists, and that inherently.
I understand, I understand.
We could easily extend and block that off and then center the gable and move the door into the center. I'm sure that, you know, Barry wouldn't have any problem with that. And if we did that, then we might even, you know, wouldn't change the trusses, wouldn't change anything in front of the house.
Or just, then it'd be something for the front wall, just extend the front wall.
In fact, it's a great.
Yeah. I think symmetrical would feel a little bit more historical accurate than this.
Minor detail.
This is very fifties.
For this side, this side.
Yeah.
It's just getting this one side.
Yeah.
Yeah. I. This is hard for me, because while the building section and the elevation drawings and the planned views are all labeled, and so they have the same scale, they don't have the same scale. The section looks like it's actually, I think it equals, right?
Yes.
Okay, so my question is, you're going on and on about the roof there, and the overhang. What's the, what's the floor ceiling height in the garage?
Eight feet.
Just eight feet?
Eight feet, yeah. Seven foot four.
I'm sorry.
Seven foot four, yeah.
Nine, we found four, people try.
Eight foot.
Well, if the, if the underside of the truss is at eight feet.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then this is, then the garage door on here is actually here. I, I'm sorry, you're drawing. The garage door on the elevation, that's why I'm asking what the bottom, the height of the bottom plate is, the bottom?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm with the garage.
Well, in the garage, the garage doors, they're just seven, seven feet? Actually have a.
Yeah, they don't extend.
I don't think, I don't think we ever put them in the garage, you think seven feet high, is that standard?
Yeah.
Yes.
Eight by seven is the standard, eight or nine by seven are standard garage doors.
I'm not sure I ever put in a garage door that was that short.
Would you ever consider, um, just to, and again, this is only to help you get the most out of this new space of yours. Would you ever consider a, a wider garage door that would help with um, taking up some of this dead space on the right and to the left of the garage door, and then also if you ever wanted to on a beautiful afternoon open up your garage door and use the space as entertainment or workout, whatever you're saying, you would have a much larger um, opening, I mean, instead of just cracking the front door and just be gonna be wired. You could do a wider garage.
How far do you find in the garage?
Twenty-two feet.
You can't do it with the overhang, you're gonna offset the door, if you put a sixteen foot door in there, you're gonna have a problem because now you're offset.
Wait, so, so explain that again, you're saying that since the garage door wouldn't be centered because it's.
I think, I think we could do it, but we'd have to look at it.
I'm just trying to get a and then that would help with the, um, overhangs and just so much space.
Looking at a sixteen foot door, you're looking at twenty-two feet, so three feet on each side. We're gonna close that front wall, you know, the overhang up. Maybe, gotta be just careful that we have enough space on either side to make it look centered.
I think that personally, this helps me wrap my head around that to a degree. Because, and, you know, from a size and scale perspective, okay, it's a two car garage. The way it looks like two car garage, then that fits more naturally than just, you know, basically a, a detached addition that has a garage door.
I, I have a lot of session with the garage. The eaves are shown on the drawing, um uh, and there's no, the none of the photographs, photographs of the house, as I'm sitting here. And the siding is brown, I can't see how the uh, eave is trimmed out. But it's, it's, what's shown on this drawing is, is never gonna work, I mean, there's no there's no, uh, fascia or anything like that.
Well, we're about to match the construction of the house.
Pardon me?
The construction of the house.
Okay, but it doesn't say that on the drawings, and it doesn't visually show that on the drawings, so I'm, that's why I'm asking the question.
I understand.
So, the response is, yes, the overhangs on the garage will match the overhangs on, on the house. I also I think you're gonna need, what was it, uh you're gonna need a trim piece here.
Yeah.
I think, which also does not show I know it's a pain when, when this is when you don't know whether or not you're gonna get approved, but, but we look at the details. And in fact, the eaves, the eaves on the house drawings are also not fully developed. So we support that, let's still know what it intends to do.
Right.
With the termination.
Well, there should be a note on the elevation that says to match the existing construction, for the betterment, for, for everything.
The roof could come down, these are the angles. They would, maybe just step in, you know. Like that, um, for here, you know, if you have brothers, then you're gonna see them here.
It's at the discretion of the board. I think we said that, uh, you guys have any, you wanna take a public comment? I, I don't, it's at your discretion.
It's, it's the chairs.
You, you have something to say?
Yeah.
I'm okay with it. Yeah, okay, it's fine.
Chris? I'm okay with it. Are you guys okay on the public comment?
Name and address, please. Thank you.
I really like to go back to the fact that the structure is originally of the garage. So, like Chris said, it needs to still look like a garage, it can't look like it necessarily I know they're gonna use it that way, but I, I really feel that I'd like the board to kind of go back to the garage feeling like
For what's the age of this one? It's much older than it looks. So in nineteen fifty-eight, we didn't have a garage.
No, it would have been a carriage house, and I think it's fine for a smaller door, but then you would have had like either a man door or window, you would have had a window up here or some sort of a barn-like, you know, something.
Gonna make it structure, so it's not like we're trying to
Yeah, yeah.
Do that.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think, you know, the request is to try to make it look like a, a carriage house, I'm just saying, I I struggle with the asymmetry of it, I don't think that that looks appropriate with the house.
Yeah.
And, and I would try to fix that and center the, you know, extend that wall and center the garage door, as you said.
It's gonna be compounded by the, then, the visual cue of the driveway.
Yeah, yes.
But that, that one, I believe is outside of our perfect driveways. Jenna?
You can't move the driveway, but you can either ride and match the drive best.
No, it's right on the edge of the property line, you can't center it on the driveway.
Yeah. So I think that we need a little, just to keep things moving on, I think we need a little bit more information and have a discussion about um, well, have you guys have a discussion about what you want to change or review for having an accepted certificate of appropriateness, and there's also a handful of items that still need information on before we could put it to the vote.
We go back to the terms, where it's just, it's about seeing the overhangs and everything, is there a picture of the existing garage?
Yeah.
Yeah. I can turn around the doors and windows, very little fascia. We're matching the garage, not the house.
Yes.
I'm not talking about print on the garage.
No, you're talking about the overhangs. Right.
They're gonna have eaves on there and that sort of stuff, oh, I'm, I have a problem with with the size and the shape. The details of it. Are, so, that's issue. I and, and it's symmetry. Yeah, so I'm not I'm not bothered. I'm not, I'm not about some of these kinds of.
Versus.
I have bigger coffee, Sheriff, if you'd like.
We're live. Thank you.
For that though?
Yes.
Because the roof pitches are not noted on the drawings. And I, I believe the comment was, yes, the roof.
The, um, portion. To define the door. Yes.
The doors and the garage door.
The, the brand, and, and the details on that.
Doors and windows.
Yeah, that, that, I was just saying. For example, this looks like it's like a fake wood garage door, which we would advise to avoid. Like, we don't want any stamping, we don't want any artificial elements to it. Um, and then just to take into consideration of all of our comments, and then have an updated drawing uh, for us to review and discuss further at, at June's meeting. Okay.
And, um, dimensions.
Oh, yeah, elevation dimensions.
Yeah, I think there's a pretty good list of what you need to show on the drawings on the application form.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to table it, so we don't have to make a vote.
Of any way? Do you want to discuss the last demolition of the garage?
Of course.
Yeah.
I personally, I personally have no issue with the demolition of the garage, it's what the homeowner wants, um we're trying, he's working with us to, to make it the exact uh, same feel of what he currently has, and it is a small garage. So, it makes sense that you would want to use it in a better fashion.
Yeah, because it's a garage, it's a more modern structure on the site as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I would make the same comments, uh, or like the same comments on, uh, the uh, existing mudroom, is it, or logroom? Okay.
I just wanna point out this org has numerous times approved other garage doors that were not wood. Just to make sure they're wood look.
Yeah. Okay, then I'll make a motion to table this for June.
Only for the garage, or was the addition being? For the floor, okay, thank you. Member Torres?
Aye.
Member Dubrasky?
Yes.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
If you have any questions in the house. Okay, next application is nineteen, uh, Main Street, or third class. I guess I, I should have asked that, but I didn't know that, that Barry would say that. So, you didn't interview yourself, I know you've had multiple different representatives, representatives from the fire department or coming neighbors, so.
Yep, um, good evening, my name is Robert, excuse me, Robert Ockenden.
Virginia Ray?
Pardon me?
Are you ready?
No, I'm not ready.
Good evening, I'm Robert Ockenden, I'm the administrator for the Pittsburgh Fire District, here at Eight Hundred Avenue. It'll be tonight, I'll tell all the, I'm Chair Musk, uh, one of the commissioners for the fire district.
Thanks for coming in. So we're just doing a fence, uh, update?
Yeah.
The light of fire words?
Yes, um, we're looking to, uh, replace the existing fence that borders uh, the property line here at nineteen North Main Street. Um, that is currently the white, I call it the stockade fence in the application. We're looking to replace that entire section, as well as the small, uh, piece that runs from that fence to the corner of the carriage house here.
Yep.
Um, the small section is, has some issues with the poster there, we're gonna make some repairs, so we thought if we're gonna replace that, we'll just make it consistent, and it'll give more of a uniform look as well to that parcel.
Very good.
Do you plan to keep it natural like this picture that you have here, or paint it?
Yeah, it would be just like that photo, um it's our intent would be to try to pressure wash it every so many years and get it back to more of a cedar look, like we attempt to do with the other sections, but
Yeah.
it seems to change rather quickly, so.
Um, the only question I had was, uh, a total height of the cunts. Is that, and I don't know if that was called, if it was, I missed it.
Um, it might be on the application there, but it is a six foot high, um. Yeah, it'd be the same height as with that existing stockade, especially. We inherited that, we were struck, it's bouncing in the van. We've done our best to put bandit, uh, but it's, it's winning the battle.
Motion to accept the application. Virginia, do you have any questions?
I was going to that's our little one, we're in, inquire of this there's not really a, a good side and bad side. Very kind of you.
Correct.
To select a fence that's
Yeah. And we did speak with Mr. Pabilla, our new neighbor, and, um, he was more than pleased to see that. Order his property, so, yeah.
Okay, to call the vote.
Yes.
Uh, member Dubrasky?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, it's ready, thanks for advancing.
Well, thank you.
Okay, twenty-one Maple Street.
Speaking of keeping kids in, in spaces.
This is what they're looking at.
Well, the street is, well we love, first and foremost, we love our new stock sign at Maple and South. Um, so we're, we're right on the corner of Maple and South, and we have a lovely corner lot, and there is a ticket fence around three sides. Um, so we're, we're right on the corner of Maple and South, and we have a lovely corner lot, and there is a picket fence around three sides of it. And we have the delightful little stream that runs in the back, the stream in the original Butler pantry where why didn't you even offer down the house? We love that.
You guys just moved in.
We just moved in, and we are learning so much about. Uh, and of course, they've been doing so many times, we did not expect to live in a historic district, but we love it. Uh, so I have a one and a half year old and a three year old, and one on the way. And.
Congratulations.
Thank you, and we love the stream, we love playing in the stream. But I cannot go to the bathroom or go inside with that stream right there, and it also, it allows access, right, there's a little shed, like a cedar shed that was built. And my one and a half year old has now figured out how to just go behind the shed and, and down to the front yard on the south, so, um. We.
Sure.
Yeah, we don't want a, a fence for a long time, we want to have access to the stream, it really is a magical component of the house. But while the children are so small and I can't wrangle them, uh.
Yeah.
We would like to just put something up, and we've seen other folks, we don't have a dog, we don't want a dog, no dogs, only kids. And we've, we've seen folks.
There's still time.
Yeah, we, we've seen folks, um, that kind of have a, you know, that, that dark green metal, and I, I think it's two enclosed dogs, but we think it would do the same trick.
Yeah.
Keep deer on it, though, and.
That would, that would also, yeah.
So that's all I'm asking for.
You know that, that app we had a little while back for the steel fence that was like?
Yeah, yeah.
This feels like the exact perfect application for that, under the contingency that there is like a hard deadline for removal, yeah.
So, thank you for coming to the board, because Steve and I were talking, um, and then I believe Jeff also brought this question up of, of your comment on temporary.
Yeah.
And we wanted to define temporary.
Sure.
And so if you just needed this for thirty days, there would never be any need for you to come to us, but the, the call out for like, was it a three year period?
I think three years, I think in three years I can get kids to not, you know.
And maybe they'll be more adventurous, or they want to play in the street, they'll feel more safe.
Because of like tiny pots going the less.
I think they'll have a torn hair here.
Oh, yeah. But I, I do wonder if, if that is the issue, I mean, I, I guess the other option is the stream is so lovely that I don't really want to put another picket fence in front of it, because it's, it really is delightful to look at the frogs and the pebbles, whatever. Um, but I understand if aesthetically. I understand that I might have to budge on that, I will also say if I can get three dry days in a row, I will put enough plants in our sideboards that like, it won't be visible, right, it, it, we have, um, if the lot, we have so many trees, it's already, there's a lot of brush back there. Because we're the corner lot, you can see everything we do, um, but I'm working on just planting enough so that it won't be an eyesore, and I, and I do think that if, that that dark green color, it wouldn't pop, if you will, and.
Yeah.
Um, but I, again, I do understand if you need to lash, but I think it.
No.
Yeah, okay.
And if you wanted a permanent fence, we would, we would ask you to go in that direction, but for this to be temporary and to have, uh, a, a date called out in three years from now, then for children's safety, there's disaster.
Right, because I, I. Three years. We're pregnant again, we could like do an extension.
There are specific building.
Lots of things.
Safety accessible. There are products out there that address that, that are temporary in fashion, yeah. So, you know, I, it's something that I think is kind of unique and not inside the building design guidelines. Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's, it seems to me, if, if you did not have a fence otherwise, and you wanted to have a garden, then you didn't want all the rodents and critters coming around snacking all the time.
Yeah.
You have to put a little fence around your garden, and that's more or less temporary, I guess I see it as that sort of thing.
Yeah. Right, so they put a net to prevent the duder, right, like where you draw the line on that.
And I put a few. They say she even need to come in and ask that all, or, or you're saying?
No, I'm saying, yeah. She's here, she's had a discussion with Steve, I'm, I would never say she's. Steve said she is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it either.
Yeah.
I mean, I wouldn't put it up without being, so I, I understand the need, I understand the temporary need.
Have you explored other styles that are also temporary?
Not really, I think I, when I just walk, I, since learning of the historical nature of the village and all the things that go with it, right, I've really just been taking cues from my neighbors more than anything else, and when I go down, so, um, I, I just walking in the neighborhood, like you were saying, I, I see a lot of folks, I can see their backyards, um, you know, and they do have a, they have chicken wire up, which I think a dark green chicken wire would be nicer than a regular chicken wire, but I, I've just seen plenty of those.
There are real nice temporary fencing panels that we can buy that are, you know, that look like iron with little pretty spikes decorated.
And the low?
And they're, yeah, they're, you know, you can get them in two feet, three feet.
Okay. We can look.
They're really expensive.
They're very good expensive.
They're super expensive, but they're super nice, so if, if you, you know, we, we would not insist on that, but if you want to look at something nice, that is an option that exists.
There's three kinds of podium will disappear.
Oh, firstly, I'm a liar, and I'm opposed to, it's rather than steel mountain posts that just have that construction feel to them, that gives me pause.
But they're, they're green too, yeah. They're all female.
Yeah. There's.
Yeah.
So do we say three years, do we say annual reapproval, or how does that work? I was fine with three years.
I was fine with three years.
Yeah.
It was passed by my tender, I'm not going to pass it.
A legal concern or boundaries that we need to be considering?
And owner, owners will really on the homeowner to show up after three years and say.
Well.
I guess it showed up Steve.
Can you say that again? I was thinking, does she still have to get a building permit? Yeah, so we can put something in the program that'll alert in our, in our permitting system that, that is not. Yeah, Steve, she still needs a building permit, correct?
Pardon?
She still needs a building permit?
I don't know, I mean, you're putting it yourself, right?
Yeah.
Well, if you have a building permit, we can do with Tyler. We do, we have a calendar.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, I mean, I, which would be the advantage of doing a building permit?
And then you could ask the question.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't.
The, the three year old is going to go six.
Just like, I'm sure. Like an administrative bookmark, not a change the hang of both, we bring it in our window, which is so, there's something that you can input.
Yeah, it's always good.
Yeah. I don't know if there's a better way to monitor it. All right, now make a motion to approve this, that's presented.
For a three year period, next second. I think I got member Sarah as a second. Um. Member Dobroski?
Aye.
Member Torres?
Aye.
Member Sarah?
Aye.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
I've been looking on Facebook Marketplace to find plans that are cheaper than. Going to the ministry.
Yeah.
There are lots of fences.
Okay.
You might look there.
Yeah.
I mean, they're probably going to be, they'll be more visible, you'd have to come back here.
Now that I know it's not, I'm scared, it's such a beautiful building. Thank you so much.
Six forty circle, the addition.
Aye.
On.
We can have in front of them if we want. Okay, great, okay, thanks.
Are you Anna?
Sam.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, you too.
So what are you looking to do?
I'm putting a second story addition on the back southeast corner, a great room addition on the southwest corner, and then a very modest, um, modifications on the front porch and over the garage.
Okay. Um, so let's think about, what's the best way to move through this?
Well, no, I guess there's every, are there?
Yeah, things are, it's a long thing.
It is. So.
Um, should we look at the front porch and then the, and then the back, the addition in the back, because one faces the street, the other one?
What was this?
Did you find it, member Sarah?
Yes.
Okay.
So the addition on the front is, uh, just the accent roofs over the garage. The accent roof over the front door, and then there are two pillars.
Yeah, so it's really, um, so, yes, that's correct, so the porch roof extending that really to combat the ongoing deterioration of the bluestone steps that I have built now six times in twenty-two years, I've also fallen on them and broken both ankles, so it's an ongoing issue. Um, it also causes a lot of water infiltration problems inside my home, that where those two, you know, where the garage and the where the two roofs is problematic, the design, um. So that's really the intent, also aesthetically, you know, to, to modernize it just a little, but the intent is really to control the water problem. And then in addition to above the garage, just that small shed roof, I've had to rebuild the transition period between the driveway and the garage slab many, many times. And I would like to stop investing funds into that, and then invest funds into fixing the problem and also adding a little aesthetic, okay?
Do you have a magnifying glass?
Yes.
My glasses are no good for course. It's not, it's everything, just zoom in here. She's going to bring you. She's.
Um, the. Pragma, do you have the, um, material of, uh, columns called out?
I do, um, I have a couple of options, but I was really just going to defer to you folks. Um, I would prefer to use vinyl and aluminum railings, which will also mimic the existing rock iron that's there, modernize it a little, but still stay with the initial, you know, cosmetic approach to the house. Um, and the vinyl really just so I don't have to continue painting. But I am going to also do cedar and paint it.
On the pillars, I'm not sure if that would be, the cedar on the pillars would be, uh, as. The, the.
Yeah, I don't prefer that.
And then a, a, a solid pillar would, would most likely look best on a house of this age.
Yeah, I, I don't prefer the cedar, but.
I mean, originally it probably had that wrought iron detail.
And it still does.
Oh, it still does?
It still does, it's very deteriorated, um.
Okay.
The roof above the porch has fallen a little because of the bluestone and the.
Yes.
So I really just want to maintain that look, modernize it, and upgrade it.
Do you have a wrought iron option, or just a cedar?
I do, yeah, I didn't bring it, but I do have it, it's, um, it's the products that go with the truck stuffing, it's black aluminum, it's powder coated.
And then, uh, there's an addition of a, another front door.
Yeah, so that's a mudroom, I think, where you see that little window?
Yeah.
That's a mudroom, um, and I would like to turn that into a door. So I actually went around the village and I found a bunch of houses that looked like they also did that.
Yeah.
Um, so I thought that would be a good option.
There's one on South Street that, they have a.
Yeah, I actually grew down all the addresses, but, yeah, I, I have four sons, and that mudroom is.
Yeah.
The mudroom is important, it's the most important room in my house, yeah. And I've had to replace the springs on the garage door about ten times in seventeen years, so I'd like to try to stop avoiding that too.
Hmm.
Are you doing hanging by them?
Well, they have to go up and down.
I'm just kidding.
Time today.
Four sons, I was like, one, two.
I don't.
Your choice of, your architect is showing up a material here.
It's already there.
Existing?
It's existing.
I'm sorry, it might say existing, but even.
It's very small, I can't see it either, yeah, so, um, it's existing bluestone, yeah, I'm not touching the existing aluminum.
What about the decky material?
It will, it proposed as tracks.
Have tracks been approved before?
It has, and I have all the addresses that the track is being done. All on my street addresses.
Yeah, the, the news is because we. Yeah.
I don't. There's a microphone right there.
So.
Yes, there's new materials.
Yeah.
More appropriate materials, uh, fabricated. Then you could help you supply.
Yeah, they really catch vinyl, aluminum, and you, you name it.
Yeah, no, they have to take that into consideration on the age of this home and.
Yeah, it's a little out, on the outskirts post-war, so I think there has probably been some flexibility on the street.
Yeah, it, it, we actually just went through a, a, a large deliberation, particularly on a newer house, presenting a different material that has better integrity than tracks, and so, yes, while that may have been improved in the past, we still feel is our responsibility to also look at alternative materials um, that may have better wear and tear, better historical integrity, um, particularly, you know, as we appreciate from your perspective as well, the protection of the resource in terms of, um, water damage, things of that nature, those are concerns for ours, us as well.
Right.
Um, and that material is called keratox.
Okay.
Have you looked, have you heard?
No, I've actually never heard of that.
So we approved that, and we've done some research on it, um.
It's, it's been approved by historical preservation.
Natural parks.
Natural parks. It's, it's considered like the, the, the platinum standard, I guess, so.
Is it a composite material?
It is, yeah.
Okay, what's the advantage?
That you can paint it.
Yeah.
Unlike tracks, um, you can, it, it, it's like, looks a lot more like wood, it's not quite this plastic looking.
Yeah.
Well, I don't check wood now there.
Yeah, tracks bends over time.
Yeah.
If you walk in the same path on tracks, it, it will sag.
How's it spelled, because A?
A.
R.
E, R.
Yeah, A, E, R, I, T, A, S.
Um, so just so I know, is the option for one or the other, are you?
We're just saying you might want to take a look at that.
I will, yeah.
It is better than tracks, it's considered to be better than tracks.
Yeah.
You know, more accurate looking, and also, I think it's probably more expensive, but.
Yeah, so that, so, keep in mind, so my budget is very modest, and that's why my remizen is very modest, but also, you know, I, I do want to maintain, and, you know, um, I want to be a team player.
Yeah.
But I also have to, like I mentioned, four sons. Yeah.
Particularly, especially like on the front of the whole shoot, because that is the moment it's full, you know, it, it does look poorly if, if, you know, six, seven years that starts to have that bending and working to it.
I thought just they choose one to.
What I'm saying is I'd be comfortable proving one in the front and one in the back.
I thought.
Okay, I feel like, um, so I worked with tracks a little bit, and I think that this might be coming from improper installation. Because tracks is, is really a, a pretty strong product, if it's installed properly.
Are you, you're not changing, you're not putting tracks on the front, it's on the back, right?
Well.
It's both the front.
So you're going to cover with bluestone?
It's literally following, it has taken it.
Yeah.
And the, and the, and the roof above the porch will be doing the same very quickly.
Yeah.
What, uh, I'm sorry, what's, what are you proposing for the roofing material?
So I'd like to do metal, I would like to do metal above the porch and the shed roof on the match.
Um, do you have a manufacturer phone up of that?
Um, so it'll be, it's being sourced by J D Martin in Penniak, um, and it will be one inch standing seam with roof breaks if they're required.
With roof breaks, they're like snow stops.
Hmm, I don't think we've used it over the floor, they don't need to be worked, that's, especially on the size of that, you wouldn't, that.
Perfect, that saves some money.
But the spacing would be important, I believe we'd look for like sixteen to twenty-two inches wide.
Okay.
Between seams.
Okay.
I'll be, I'll be here for the copy there, page, on the kind of development film station, talking, coming, so.
One standing seam, and then we would just need to call out the manufacturer, even if it's being sourced through that company.
Yeah, sure.
Manufacturer of it.
No bends?
Yeah.
Between the.
No.
No.
No corrugation?
No corrugation.
Not a fat seam, you're a narrow seam?
One inch, one inch standing seam, yeah, no bends, no.
One inch sharp is okay, not much.
The width, the width of the seam, it needs to be a narrow.
Okay.
Because they come, they come thick as well, but.
Okay, so I can get that for you, um, do you want that?
We've also tried to shy away from a gloss finish on the metal roof. We've also tried to shy away from a gloss finish on the metal roof, accent roofs that we've approved.
I actually prefer the matte, so that's what I was gonna do.
Yeah.
Also, like, the fake copper is not that great.
Yeah, what color are you expecting?
Black, yeah, to match my existing.
Perfect.
You have eighty-seven South Main actually just got.
Yeah. They're 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 um. They're the, they're all pretty gassy, something something in between.
And I think we approved the southern house.
Yeah, the southern.
Southern house.
Yeah, there's actually four.
They've got the entire roof before, like.
I thought we said no.
Five southern only on the barn in the back or karatow slash garage, but not on the front.
And then twenty-one in Washington app actually just put one on. Yeah.
Let's stick, I mean, we're talking post-war versus, I don't know all pan, but I feel like the metal accent on. I I can't think of any of the post-war homes with the metal accent like that.
Yeah.
Um, this right here. Which one? You're talking about this home, correct, or home? Right, yeah, no, like you you called this out as an example of one we approved, and I'm just saying that that's not historically relevant to this home.
It's my opinion that if she's putting, if anyone comes putting a standing seam metal roof. Even if it's modern metal, it should reflect the same proportions as historically accurate metal roofing. Because this, what you see now, what's all over the place now is brand new. I mean, that's. I'm trying to think when I first started seeing it, I think I saw a lot. Uh, dragging up in the under around decks, but the last time I was there was two thousand and three. But my point is.
Okay, guys, we still gotta hold back a different to live that.
Yeah. Brand new house on southernland had a standing seam for accent roofs.
Which house?
The house that was demoed and rebuilt.
Yeah, the white one. I think it's.
Did we not have a copper roof that we approved recently?
That was also on the south main.
Yep, on the south main, but it was.
Do you have details on the um this accent roof above the garage on this, the. Basically posts that you want to put them on or the the.
Yeah, the brackets. I was just gonna do corbels, just basic brackets or corbels, um.
Oh, yeah, they would.
Um, I I do prefer wood, yes.
What's the shape?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, details.
Um, it would be just. It it would really probably just be that. I wouldn't have any scroll or anything to it. It's just. It would just be like a ninety degree.
Okay, is it gonna be exposed like that? I just don't want to introduce too many new detail to such a simplistic. Home, you know, if you look at the above elevation, your existing conditions.
It's.
To, I just wanted to see if we could call that out as something.
It's it's a very typical of modern style. This is an architect design. Were you aware of that?
Uh, yes, Bob Lamonts, yeah.
Well, he built it.
He built it.
Not the architect, Stevenson Burton.
Uh, yes, I do have that information. Yeah, I do.
So this is, uh, I can't remember who's on the board. This was probably a while ago. Um, there's a house that had a fire up in the same neighborhood. And he wanted to put a narrow siding. And I did it wrong on the board to see the difference between the broad siding. Which I believe is the same type of deciding on where sites, broad siding. So I was able to show. What the difference that it would make to go from here to here. And like, this is very. It's a very simple, straightforward design.
Right.
And I I agree about not shitting it up too much.
Yeah, you've been nailing ahead how I was feeling.
All of these design elements are like modern country, like design elements to a like mid-century home and it's like. It changes the whole feel of the house.
I see what you're saying. Um, it's. Mid-century is very difficult to work with, yes. Um, it is why we kept it very simple while trying to still attain the same purpose. There does have to be brackets. I have to be back, put brackets in the shed roof. I'm willing to put what you prefer.
I guess what I'm just trying to say is that all of it in concert, the uh overhang on the door, the garage door, and then the addition of the door altogether. Transform it into a feel that doesn't feel mid-century, feels modern.
Yeah, it is, however, in keeping with a lot of the upgrades that a lot of the other mid-century homes have done on my street. I really went around and I pulled what everybody else has kind of done. For this purpose, honestly, so I could stay consistent.
I don't remember how many I've seen since.
For the old garage overhand, the new garage?
Just uh new additions in this neighborhood. I don't, I don't remember seeing.
Well, they may have been done before.
Yeah.
To be my point.
Well, my neighbor right next to me, number eight, has basically the same thing over his garage with columns, just not brackets. And then the neighbor next to me, number four, just did an addition and I'm proposing the same pillars on my front porch that she did. So I did try to um stay very consistent with what everybody asked us on.
We appreciate that. I mean, I would say though that the the one nuance is that if it was an addition that is new, it's not meant to feel like. The old structure, whereas we are adding on some existing structure, changing the character of that structure rather than having. An addition in the original resource.
Right, I understand.
And we're always looking at each application individually. And just because other houses. That may or may not be the same style. I know that neighborhood very well. They're not all this. Sort of mid century modern. There are other homes in that neighborhood that.
They're more traditional style.
Uh, yeah, they're they're. They can take on, like they're, if they're a more colonial style, let's say. Double colonial type title, architectural houses there. They can accept some of this better than this. This architectural style is pretty specific. I just think there's, you might be able to simplify things and I'm a bit not sure what we'll actually.
Alright, right, that's why I'm focusing much more on the front. Yeah, we see an interaction, yeah.
In order to keep the shed roof, but simplify it, um. It could be, it could be hidden brackets within the roof where there's no brackets. That would simplify that design and still keep.
Yeah, just having.
And it's still. A little extra research on it and see if we can find some examples of what, even not just in our village, but across the entire country of. Of a of a home of this age and style, what they've done to mitigate this water drip and.
Yeah, obviously, ask examples if you want me to.
And then all, I mean, are you gonna have a gutter on that of sorts or is it still gonna be a drip? Talking about the garage or the front door, over the garage. I think that there's valid argument on why she means the metal roof. For water mitigation over the front door.
Yes.
Just on what it looks like.
I agree with it, but I think it could be simplified.
Yeah. To, a part of it is the metal accents.
Right, it's really drawing attention to it rather than being functional addition.
Yeah.
Well, I just, I just think stylistically, she could have the same elements more simplified. Although I think. How far is it between?
Because what I think what Virginia's saying is that what what you have here is you have the roof. Overhang over the front door that you invited to have now metal. You want to pull it out a little bit to match. A new stair, front staircase.
Right.
It kind of turns the corner on onto the front of the home. And that's drawn right there.
So the profile.
Yeah.
Right here.
It kind of turns the corner.
Comes all the way out and then across.
And that's it's just adding too much, you know.
Okay.
Like, ended.
Ending, well, that's fine. You can eliminate that. I think he cut, I think the architect cut that in order to hide the gutter was his intent back.
Where, uh, it also appears as though it's extending out so far because that's where the steps start.
No, well, that's, they don't currently start there.
Where they, where they will start.
Yeah, but I mean, it's all.
In Europe after.
Well, before I forget, kind of a little bit off topic, but you know, you had asked the question around pillars. It 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 would strike me that, you know, if if you're looking for minimal maintenance, but also historic accuracy, that the wrought iron would be. The direction will go.
The pillars?
Yeah. I mean, matching what's existing, it, you know, it it is going to last, have minimal maintenance for you.
Um, yeah, I as the, to have them white is really much more appealing. So I was gonna pull the the black in with the railings on the porch. But but really, every single house on my street has white pillars and it is much more appealing than wrought iron.
I mean, you have white pillars without that would be PVC though.
And and I I'm fine doing wood.
Yeah.
If that's preferred.
Wood would be preferred.
Okay, then that's fine.
If you don't want to go with the raw iron.
Yeah, and I'd rather do white wood.
Honestly, like PVC is brittle. We get cold winters, like that that is more likely to break. Than, you know, cedar, which is gonna be naturally protected against insects and other things. Aesthetically, I think the wrought iron is great.
Yeah, I I mean, I think your your intention is to to actually to modernize the house. And to remove some of the mid-century character of it with the design elements that you've got here. This is very, you know, Joanne Gaines. Like, modern country kind of look, right?
Um, the primary intention is really to eliminate the the lab safety, like that's really the primary intention. And keep it very simple. I and I am. I'm kind of pigeonholed, right, because of the style of my home. And so it's hard to take a. Mid-century direction when I was also working with. All of the other homes on the street, and there are quite a few mid-century homes on the street that have taken more of a traditional direction. So I was kind of going down that path. It is, so what would you suggest as a mid-century option if?
So if we wanted to do mid-century option, you wouldn't have the metal. You know, roofs with a standing seam, you would just have, you know, you would match your roof. Roof, just have asphalt.
It's like opulent opposed to functional.
Yeah, and then you would, you know, your pillars would maybe be very modern, mid-century modern, very simple, like. Metal columns almost that you could paint a color or, you know, you could paint them white if you wanted, but they would be just tubes. Rather than having, you know, end caps on them and other things like that.
Yeah.
Is that.
Have, uh, you could have the brackets and the roof line here too, but again, very simple, simple lines without a lot of curves or anything.
Yeah, right, yeah, um, so just to clarify, um. The shed roof is okay, but you want me to eighty-six the brackets is what it sounds like.
I'd like to do a little rack or a column.
They are functional, but they can, the shed roof can be supported and that can be hidden within the roof.
Yeah, I'd just like to do a little homework on the shed roof and see if I can find some examples out there and what what people have done before. And how it will look.
Okay, um, I actually have a picture, not to cut you off, but I have a picture that I kind of used as, um, can I?
That's it. And then just one comment on the on the right side elevation, it kind of, it really shows the. Uh, new decks, um, roof line a lot more accurately than what's on the front elevation. And I think we really should. Consider approving the the standing seam metal roof because of how shallow that slope is. If we went with asphalt there, there's gonna be some water damage. I mean, that is a shallow pitch on this new porch, so. While while it will look like this in, I'm obviously on the front elevation, I think we really should have taken into consideration. On this right side to, and you said black.
And, yeah, yeah, my apartment is black. So it would really look like this. Um, that probably won't be S roll. It would probably be more right angle.
Yeah.
Um, but that's really how it would probably.
Yeah.
This this sort of bracket is a far more traditional bracket. This is not, this is traditional. Their shape is traditional and this is a modern house. So I think you need to hear.
But you could do brackets, that's kind of something more like this, like a very simple bracket.
More.
Like that. And then, you know, the roof, that roof like that, but just have something very simple like.
So I think that's a faux. I don't know if that's structural, because I'm not sure that actually candidly resolves how common the structure of the home, but I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, the structure can be incorporated.
It can be incorporated into the shed. I can actually just completely get rid of the brackets.
So there could be.
How deep is it? Do I have that?
The shed roof?
But not the shed, the.
The garage roof.
Ten feet, ten, ten and a half feet?
Ten and a half feet, the porch.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm sorry, you were looking at the garage or the porch?
I'm I'm going back and forth, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, the shed roof is about two feet and the porch is ten and a half.
Yeah, there's just a a house I saw the other day that just stands out a lot in. The Sherwood neighborhood where they just put like a huge entryway like that on the front and it completely ruins the character of the house.
Yeah.
Like, ten feels big.
This.
I think that in theory it's huge, but it's really gonna not be very noticeable, probably because of the slope of it.
Right, because of what I'm thinking of.
Right, I know what I was just thinking about, yeah, and that's pretty substantial.
Right.
And it's also why I didn't go with a gable. I didn't even think about proposing a gable. I wanted a roof that you almost didn't see.
Yeah. Yeah, a gable wouldn't.
No, and and it would have cost me more water pumps in the middle.
I imagine it would look a lot different with that staircase matching the edge of the bump out. Rather than wrapping around, but that makes it just feel so big. There's a lot to consider on this one. There's a lot, I mean, there's a lot I can, yeah.
The back's pretty simple, but.
As far as the rear goes, I I don't see too much. I think when I say that, I mean, not only is that we should discuss, but then you can also see from. Does anyone have any comments on the roof or I'm sitting on the on the rear?
Um, my only comment is again, a design comment, which has to do with cottage windows on a mid-century house, you know, and. You are, you know, you have a mid-century house, but you're trying to add like this modern country cottage element to it and. You know, this isn't a no, this is just not really the preferred, the preferred thing is to keep the integrity of the.
Right.
Architectural style of the house.
So you prefer I eliminate the minds?
Um, you know, a cottage window is when the upper sash is shorter than the bottom sash. Which is what's drawn on this uh elevation.
Is it?
Yes.
For those existing or for those.
No, I have sliders.
Is this not an addition?
Yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And.
That hasn't been an architect blunder because he was just supposed to do equal sash, um.
Yeah. Yeah, if either way, double, all your other windows are probably.
They are sliders.
Or sliders.
They're sliders. And I have no air conditioning. That's a reason why I would like double hung in the back, because I have a boiler and I would like to.
Alright, so what do we need to consider? We need the uh do a little homework on the shed roof. Um, we need to have details on the doors. Um, we'd like you to do some uh view of the aritass material. We would also like information on the metal roof as far as the manufacturer, just can call that out.
Okay.
Um.
Also, like the door and window. Also, like the door and window specs.
Yeah, I'll get all that, sure.
And then are there any white fixtures or anything like that that you're adding?
No, I'm not adding.
Entryway dead. On the stairs. You want dimensions on the entryway? Well, if you're going to change it, because to your point, it kind of wraps around right now. Yeah. Oh, no, um. Yeah, definitely need that. That's a good point, that the new entry will wrap around the front edge levels too. I it would be preferred not to. If there's a reason that you need it to be extended to that length. To a point that it actually, you know, wraps around the house. The front edge or leave it there and and bring it out and be the parallel, but we really wanna preserve this front, this front corner. And that's my, that was my comment on the on the roof. Wraps around them. It just goes back to like the modestness of a post-war home and that and that just feels like a more grand entryway.
So to kind of mitigate all of these concerns, does it make more sense to draw the porch back about eighteen inches and. Then we don't have the wrap around the front.
Yeah.
I still have, so the issue with the porch.
So this is technically the, so the existing edge of the home right here. Is is really right here, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so then you have this bump out on the roof that this is would be not preferred.
Yeah.
And then you also have. What looks like this stone edge right here, right?
Well, it wraps around the ball in front. I mean, it's along the the north south line too.
And then that's that's right here too.
Yeah, yeah, so that's all original. Well, what I'm saying is, what if I pulled back? The slope of the porch about eighteen inches, which would eliminate this concern. It would bring the stairs back, which would make them less substantial, which would be more in line with mid-century design.
Yeah.
It kind of sounds like it would eliminate this as the concern, which I'd be fine with, actually.
And um, yeah, no, I agree with all of them.
Okay, alright, so, okay, and then I will get you the specs on the doors. Um. You would like to research that, okay?
Yeah.
Um, I will research.
It's like everyone to do some. I don't know if we called it out explicitly, but is the intention for the two doors to match?
It is.
Okay.
So they, yeah. Um.
Is the existing door staying the same or are you replacing that?
No, I'm gonna replace a tree on my house and the door is needs to.
Then we need information about the door.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is this a storm or screen door that we're seeing? Is it a solid wood door? What looks the existing?
The existing door is wood and that's a storm in front of it.
So it's solid panel?
It has two, it's three lights. Three light stacked lights, I think it's original. Um, so I have a. Does this mean that I have to come back for June?
Um, we we're always really open about the everything's time, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're supposed to do what?
He would like.
Okay, so let's let's talk about a special meeting.
Well, we meet June seventeenth. So.
So so that's our current, do you want to pump them back? You can break ground there, even if we get pushed back.
So he's willing to only break ground, so we, from a budget standpoint, we might not be doing the front until the fall or mess spring. We would really, really like to start the back.
Yeah.
Could I get? Half approval on the back, assuming that I get you everything that you want this week.
He can have approval on the whole thing and if he looking, if he's looking to break ground at the end of June, I'm really, I did a June meeting. There shouldn't be any issues.
Well, there's issues with deposits because it's kind of an uncomfortable position to be a homeowner to put deposits down on something when you don't have approval for something.
Yeah.
So that is the situation.
So you want to start the week on twenty-third?
The builder does, so that means the mason has to start the first week of June.
Oh, so you need it first week of June?
Well, the mason would like to break ground first week of June, so it can cure.
So.
And that's her back on me.
When do you want to come, when did you have all this information that we discussed, ready to do reapproval?
Tomorrow.
Okay. What what is your holdup on the rear addition?
Oh, we don't have any holdup on the rear.
The tracks spec, the windows.
Everything on the rear is irrelevant as far as the trucks, so I I I. Don't know, but I would think that you could approve the rear addition, but the front. You know what I mean? If that's what she would like to do and you can do it, like prove the rear so she can get. Because here's the problem, we should go run into as far as having a contractor. I need plans.
Yeah.
Alright, I need a full set of plans. They got, you know, I mean, that's kind of taking a little plan, they're approving the plans. For the addition, so the rear, if you just can sexually go. Say she needs all that information for the front porch to garage, but the rear uh rear addition is approved as submitted. And she could move forward with her contractor and get the information and come back for the rest.
Of course.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
That's great.
Do we want, do we want to do that?
I can do that, but I would.
We need to call off those the windows.
Yes, the win, these windows need to change. We don't have any, well, this is a just a solid glass door. Onto the fortune of the.
Um, it would probably be the same door if not on the front.
That's that's how it should.
Yeah, I would use the same doors.
It still need to be materially appropriate, pardon? It still need to be materially appropriate, right? Just not designed wise?
No, you can put vinyl and designs on bags and home low over this place that nobody can see. Pardon, how much of the rear elevation is this?
No.
No.
But why, why are we even talking about it?
That's what we're saying, we're trying to see it now.
We haven't really talked about it much at all.
Yeah.
No, 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 but why are we even talking about truth?
So Virginia, Peter Point, you would like me to have the architect change the window design?
So.
Yeah, the only thing you can see is the one side from the road, it it. Like you said, minimally visible, you're not gonna see the back, you're not seeing the inside.
It's not visible from like forty on the other side?
No.
Cool.
Which side? Pardon, which side?
Which there's no, no, it would be the east. Um, it's not.
Yeah, I'm looking at a nice kind of less, because it's like, because your house is tilted like this a little bit. So the west elevation kind of has a little peak out towards the side of victory.
But there's no. There's no windows, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't care, really, you can just approve the addition and then have it come back for the.
For the front, yeah.
I thought you just said we don't need it, she doesn't need any approval for the addition on the.
I think probably not, I mean.
I don't think the materials matter, but the, you know, the scale and the massive that matters. We do have, we can say, you know, yes, sorry, you can't build a four-story addition on, that's gonna loom over your house.
If 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 we could. There, it's part of this, well, that's what you'll have approved.
Okay, well, uh, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the rear addition as it is presented.
I'll second that motion.
Member Cyril?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dubrasky?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Totally rejected that.
So, uh, you can send anything to me and I'll forward it to the board. And I also, if you look at this meeting, that's where the new material that they were talking about was approved. It has like all the specs and the history of it, if you wanted to. Research it, but.
Yeah.
Thanks for that. Do we want to schedule a special meeting or does June seventeen work?
Says about two other portions for a while, so I don't, you know, I mean, I don't, unless you really need it, right?
How does it work, like, so you get approved and then you. Get a building permit and then you have how much time from the time of the building permit to finish your?
One year. One year?
Oh, okay, well, well, let's just not get out and I'll come back at June seventeenth then, because then we're both stay organized and on the same track. I feel like that's the best way to go.
If that works for your schedule, it works for us. Was that?
You have to make a motion to table the other portion of the.
Okay, June seventeenth. That's a.
Can you recall out findings of fact for the approval then right now?
I will first, I'd like to make a motion that we table the front. Um.
Here you do.
Changes until June seventeen.
I'll second that motion.
Member Dubrasky?
Aye.
Member Torres?
Aye.
Member Cyril?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then the findings of facts are that the rear addition as presented. Um, are technically not visible. Min- are minimally visible from the public's way. And that the right elevation, which we've defined as, well, obviously that that the right elevation, which is visible. Um, is accurate and meets all criteria to appropriate addition to this hall.
Thank you.
The recording will be posted tomorrow if you want to listen to it again.
I've been thinking about this for ten years, so, um.
It's good.
Do you, thank you, I really am very excited about this, um. Once we agree on everything, do you want the architect to change everything? So you have new plans?
In, um. We can work them into motions. Um, if you're able to have some of the changes updated for June seventeenth meetings, that would be nice. Um, to kind of make progress from this meeting.
Yeah.
Then if there's any other changes that should be called out or changed. We can either go to July or we can call them out into those that motion and we've done that multiple times.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck. Thanks.
Okay, we are at um nineteen Jeff Road.
Hello, guys.
Hello.
So back with a beautiful fence. So I got my huge nine million pound left up here, I don't know why. Um, okay, so. From last month, we'll read you the information only.
Yep.
Nothing has changed, the only thing that's changed is today a lady got hit literally at my. Quarter of my street.
Oh my gosh, is she okay?
She's okay, I was.
What was it, a rush hour?
I was in front of the house with my son and she was running and a car didn't look at her. You rolled over the side of that.
Oh my gosh.
So she's okay, but.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah, another one of those cases where it's like. You really need the specs.
Yeah.
People go too fast.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Everywhere.
Literally was sitting there having a call in, called it out and stopped because they were going to try and. And that's when they stopped, okay.
I hear my roof will go thirty and I'm looking from both of.
If nothing's changed, if I recall, we pretty much were all like, hey, this is perfect, that's it, we just add some design input.
Yes, and so that was the only thing, I remember that diversity, um. The question, I apologize, do not judge me with the photos, it was the absolute worst day and I hadn't had a chance to cut the grass, but anyways. Uh, I know Carolina, you.
That's a fifty dollar fine.
Well, that was the thing, I was trying to lead as long as possible. Before we vote.
Pick those dandelions, machine.
Pull up some nutrients.
You see some dogs. If you drive by my house, you will see me literally with a Home Depot bucket manually picking up every dandelion, so.
You have a short one and a long one, I invested in the long one.
Oh, I got.
Don't bend over as much.
Yes, exactly. My wife got me that one, I feel like, but.
Just piss off my neighbors, let my dandelions do their dandelion thing.
I want you guys to drive by my house, my lawn's corporate. Guys, you're all bragging about your dandelions. I don't know, I'd like you to see my backyard, it's an Irish nut.
A rental home, so it's a lot of deferred maintenance, so getting back there. Anyways, you would mention that, um, the fence kind of cutting across the front of the, um. I guess Jeff Road side of the house, to kind of have an opening gate kind of to the front door walk up.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Um, don't talk with the misses, uh, she's like, oh, you know, it's nice, but uh, let's gonna add a little bit more gloss here, so we're going to, uh.
Yeah.
I think the rain is just. Fine. Fine and fairly workable.
Yeah, and so now that area that will be next to the concrete block on the Jefferson side. We're going to do kind of a landscaping, you know, mulch, brandy mulching bushes. We may try and do, if you look at one of the photos, kind of staring at the back. Uh, of kind of Jeff Road side, you'll see we have countries already kind of lining. We may try and add those to add a little bit of enclosure to the backyard so that less people. Rough hours looking in our yard, so, uh, but that's the only other change. Otherwise, exactly the same as what we talked about last month.
Okay.
I'm going to take member Torres a second. Thank you. Um, member Cyril?
Yes.
Member Dubrasky?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very. Awesome, thank you very much.
Make sure it's very impactful because you will have people stop any wondering.
That is, that is very.
So like, well, my neighbor, that's like they have multiple calls.
Um, where did for Lincoln? Oh, was that you?
Where's for Lincoln?
Yes.
The the African head or a um previous engagement, he couldn't. Avoid, so he came in and asked, so they sent me mail, um, asking me to represent. This fence was previously approved for the property, the only thing he's doing is adding to the other side.
Yep.
Um, the, his daughter's moving into a home and he has dogs and she wants to be able to. Keep them in pain.
Isn't that just so?
Pardon?
There's his daughter that bought it, because I thought that house just sold.
Yeah, Jeff Davis bought the house, but it's moving his daughter into it.
So, um, yeah, it was actually kind of interesting when he asked for this, um. New fence to be added, what was that, a year ago maybe?
Yeah.
A year and change.
Yep.
And that he only did it on the southern street side and then to the rear.
He hated the fence. So he bought property.
Oh, right, why is he gonna take the fence down?
No.
I can't tell you how many people told me about the stuffs.
I know. But he just wants to, like I said, he he bought. Dogs and they'd like to keep them growl, but continue the fence as previously approved, same style.
Yeah.
Just completing it.
And the doors called out for a position?
Yep.
An access door called out?
Yep.
Okay.
We're gonna keep it six feet?
Yes. Kind of matching using that previous approval.
We're just reapproving or is this material in there? Are we re- are we just reapproving the old permit or is this material in there?
This is new, there's an addition to what, it's an additional section to what was previously.
Extension to the previously approved. With the identical materials.
Yeah.
I mean, at this point.
Anyone have any questions?
No.
I'm making a motion to approve the files.
See, honestly, I feel the other way because the entrance is on Lincoln and it really just gives it a definition of this is the way the house goes. Rather than just kind of being ambiguous. Maybe a different style would be better, but I don't think they exist.
It's really big.
What about that fence on Sullivan?
It doesn't matter, though, I mean, it's like.
Notice the fence on, um, I'm sorry, I'm Jeff. That looks just like this, it's technically the rear of their home.
Yeah.
Yeah. Who made a motion?
Member Dubrasky?
Yes. Yes.
Member Torres? Member Sarah? Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, nineteen bottom.
So I've got a few projects going on.
This is the order of the package.
Uh, which one are you talking about?
So right now, what I'm talking about is the skylights and the missing front window.
Okay.
Um, they, I'm still evaluating options for the other windows. I've been consulting with architect fully filled since last fall. And talked with a couple other people and questions are what to replace, what to repair, and how to get these up working properly.
Good.
So. Um, and I, I did put some photos in there, um, and I have replaced a bunch of windows. And you can't tell they look absolutely identical to what the original ones on there.
So when you say you replaced windows, were those, are you talking about windows on the original house or are you talking about the addition guys just did?
Both uh, windows in the front of the house were replaced, windows on the side of the house.
So these ones that weren't circled, you've replaced those, right?
Uh, those windows right here were replaced, these are new.
Okay.
And they went proposing for this window up here is the identical window model, but makes it the same size as that.
Sorry, you're replacing, these ones here were replaced already?
Yes.
And you're, these are the circle.
Because right now, the only one I'm asking for is the attic window on the front, because there's no window there. It's a distorted window.
Okay.
So um.
And you're gonna use the same model as what?
Same model as there and the same as the one below it.
But keep the same size?
Keep, keep the same size as what currently has. I can show you the colors color if you want. Yeah, I'm just putting this to think about and figuring out the options. So these two windows are new.
Okay.
And their trim was replaced, so I had carpenters. Um, make the um, the trim the same dimensions with each thick four inches wide.
Right.
And it's put the drip caps on where appropriate. We milled cedar um. Um, sills on the bottom, so you know, the point, the goal is to make them look identical. Um, and they're all wooden windows. Um, so, so these are new because this was not an original window that went on my house. You can see in, in this one here. It was a large window like this one. When you go back to the ones in the seventies, it was a double window like this. So I went back to the double window that was originally on it. And I do not know if this window is original either. This doesn't match any other windows in my house.
Yeah, it looks very thick and very wide.
Wider than normal. Sometimes people did that.
Yeah.
That's the double.
This is the double window, but this is that big window.
Yeah, it's probably.
I think it's.
Anyway, that's, that's still up for debate, um, because it has, it's the only window in the house that actually had cords. Okay, all the others had wooden pads and so anyway, uh, but that's a future discussion. Um, so anyway, but I wanted to point out that I'm trying to do the right thing and get a working solution. And whether they're restored or new, the plan is to keep it looking essentially identical to how it looks now. But we'll get into the windows other time, other than the one attic window.
So tonight, for, I know there's multiple steps, but tonight it's one attic window?
One attic window and the stairs.
And the two sides. Okay, let's stay on the attic window. There is currently nothing there.
There's currently nothing there, just a storm over.
And the windows that you're gonna put into the attic window are the same as the ones that are right below.
Correct.
And.
But, but size could be.
Yeah. The same window spec.
Correct, and the. Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, any questions on the attic window or replacement?
No, not for me.
Are they, do we have any uh, model numbers to call out or is it?
Call the heritage and you can take a look back at the application I had from twenty sixteen that had all the specs in there.
Okay, um, do we have that information?
What's?
Now, just want the record to show I trust you. I, you do a very good job of all the additions. I'm just trying to make sure that it's all.
It's only the skylight specs included tonight? Or there was the original approval as well letter?
Yes.
Yeah. But uh.
Oh, the original approval for the previous window.
Yeah, I believe that was twenty sixteen.
It didn't call out the.
I'll pay a call.
Okay.
But anyway, I have it listed in my cover letter uh, of window model chart.
Oh, oh, okay, here we go. I was gonna deal with one. This one's from uh, five five twenty five.
Is it an apartment on the second floor?
Okay.
No, so what, what we're doing, so for actual, but what's going on right now, imminent construction starting in June. Is I'm working on refurbishing the front rooms as the last room in the house we haven't touched. What we're doing is lofting the um, attic roof and providing. Um, a ladder access to, to storage and what's currently the attic, which is currently inaccessible. So we're looking to gain is right now that front room is used for storage and I'm looking to use the attic for storage. And what I'm looking to gain on the front room is um, where it'll be a, a guest bedroom and I'm hoping to use it as a home office. Um, with opening up the ceiling and um, lofting that room. Um, what I'm looking to gain is additional light, so I'd like to be able to work there as an office. And then have to run lights on all day long. It'd be nice to have enough light in there that's cheerful and pleasant for him to be in. So that's, that's all what I'm looking to do with the skylights. And also for the storage area, the skylight would add um, natural light. Otherwise, there'd be no windows or anything in there. I don't plan to work at a dormer. Um, the goal is to add uh, the skylight. Um, the skylights I proposed are essentially the same dimensions as the second floor windows. Um, that was intentional, um, mostly not a lighting. And to keep it in the same style and I'm also proposing keeping them centered um, and located directly above the second floor windows. Which I think is important for symmetry.
Yeah.
The ones I have picked out are, I think basically the slimmest ones I can find, so they project up minimally. And it's a gable front house. So it's gonna be flat top, it's not gonna have a big bubble over it, don't even look directly at the house. I'm not expecting to even see this. Um, and um, the, actually the neighbors have. Skylights like this, I already have an existing skylight like this on the other side.
Oh, you do? I was gonna ask about the north direction.
So. From this good, this street to consider, this is the house next door to me. Um, they have a skylight, um, that's in similar style and then they have other local decorations on the roof. Still trying to get rid of the attic fan, which is part of the reason why I wanted to do um. Some of the window updates, just so we can't sleep in the bedroom um, at night because the attic fan next door was.
Oh, really?
Um, but that's, anyway, I'll, I'll see if I can get the neighbor to. Do something about that as well, but it literally blows until three in the morning because there's no soffit vents, there's no.
Wow.
Anyway. But anyway, that's, that's another I want to say, but um. Anyway, so both the house across the street and the house next door have similar skylights. Um, and given that um, the places this is visible from in front of the house. Um, is, you wouldn't see it. Um, from the sidewalk, there's trees just down the road, so it would, there would be places you could see it. But um, maybe from the, from spots in the street, but in general, it's the gable front house. And it's meant to be pretty thin.
This is the premier.
That's the front of the house, that rendering didn't have the porch because that was, I was working on my interior things, but all the windows are, should be the correct size. Everything else should be.
I'm just trying to figure out, yeah, from the, if you're looking at the front of the house, you're not gonna be able to see those.
I, I, I do just have to say, you know, just, I, I think you, you've done a phenomenal job in terms of the consideration. Around placing them, but just, you know, in the explicit guidelines, you know, it, it, it does make clear that, you know. Roof should be free of clutter and particularly falls out, avoiding skylights. Um, and, and in spite of the fact that you're correct, in the front of the house would be minimally visible. But it's more so from the passenger, right, or, or, or the pedestrian on the street, and walking down the street, they would clearly be visible. And, and, and at least, I mean, I'm all on board with the front window, but the skylight, I don't think I can get behind it.
I, I agree with you there and I'm looking through the uh. Our guidelines to see um, right, something about skylights. I'm not finding them.
It's uh, it's. Page seventy-one, section five. The roof is one of the most, building, most significant character defining elements. That should be made, uh, be used mainly to retain roof shape in an uncluttered form. Great satellite dishes, skylights, solar panels and mechanical equipment. This is what they mean by. I'm not disagreeing with you, but.
And um, also, I want to point out, I've read that section and I don't read that as a requirement, I read it as a suggestion.
Yeah.
I think our code limits are pretty clear that when you say should, it's a recommendation. To be, as it says, shall, that is required. I mean, we're thinking about all this in the grand scheme of things. Makes sense. I'm trying to do the best I can to meet my objectives. I'd like to get some better lighting, make these rooms work well. Will it have some visible change? Yes. I don't, I just don't see this as having a major detrimental impact. Um, it'll have some impact. I just don't think it raises to the level of a large effect.
Think you'll find it's hot. The skylights make your space hot.
Yes, fixed especially.
Um, so we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to see about that. We're also working on the HVAC system.
And these are south, this is the south.
That's a south facing wall.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would give us.
That I added. But they're not fixed.
Yeah, and I believe the um, ones that we're gonna have will probably have a shade put over them, so if it's too bright during the day. Uh, we could use that.
Um, the skylights, in my opinion, are, are, are fine. They're not bubble skylights. Justin's talked about the amount that they'll true, um, which will be minimal. They're also not front facing. They are on the side of the house. Um, I, we've approved multiple skylights um, on this board. I can think of a handful and they've all been in this style and um, in, in size, so. Those are my comments on, on the skylights.
Yeah, I'm, I'm second back. I don't have an issue. So I guess I'll make a motion to approve the.
The attic window and the two skylights.
Cause they're one application or?
I think it's one application.
Are we doing separate motions for the?
We can separate them if you want.
Why?
I was just wanting to make sure.
Yeah, I mean.
Cause they're part of one application. Yeah.
Yes, and then the rest of it can be left open until I can get a report from um, Lake Hill. And we clearly know what's being prepared and what's being in place.
Now, one comment that Chris usually makes at the beginning is that we don't have a full board. Full board is five.
Um, so.
And, and you're allowed to say I'm not ready for a vote if you think that it's either gonna be a, a, a loss or a tie in your favor.
I, I don't know what you're, you're gonna do. Two of you said you're fine with it, one has said nothing and Chris has said he's concerned. I hope I addressed your concern by pointing out it's as should and not shall. And also, I don't think it, this raises to the level of um, excessive clutter on the roof. It would be visible, but I wouldn't call it clutter.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll second Carolina's motion.
Sorry, I just want to clarify one thing real quick. The um, application as it's written, um. It's just for the attic and the skylights, or do you have other windows in the application as it's?
The only portion that I'm considering for tonight is the attic window and the skylights. I put some information about the other windows. But I understand you need a report on the feasibility of that, so I'm not asking you to act on it. The only thing I wanted to point out is that I've done some of these before and I've worked very hard to make sure they, they look.
Yeah, I, I, thanks, thank you.
Do I need to do an official amendment to the application?
No, no, just leave half of it open.
Yeah, yeah, so you can come back with additional windows later.
And, yeah.
Yeah.
Before we go, just a few more questions, just, uh, I think we discussed it, but I want to make sure that I'm on the safe page. Um, so this will be flushed to the existing roof line?
Correct.
Without, like, I mean, are we talking several inches completely flush?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you're three inch, it's a typical fixed skyline of a three inch.
Oh, yeah, I'll mention that.
And this is a similar skylight next door and this was approved by the sport. It was built about ten years ago.
Uh, excuse me, I'm just gonna say if something was approved ten years ago, it's not this board.
No, it was approved by the, oh, you're saying it was approved by the APRV, not the HPP?
No, I was probably. There are different individuals, times change, uh, the ordinance change. Ordinance may change. I think the guidelines have not been out for ten years, maybe they have them.
The guidelines change.
The historic um, um, building standards hasn't changed.
I mean, all I can say is I can't speak to the thought process or motivations of previous board members and their votes. But I am tasked with being the interpreter of the existing guidelines and voting on how I see that just fits into that. Regardless of, you know, historical precedent. So how about, how about the other skylights that we've had approved on additions and new builds? And we did want not to keep bringing it up on the backside of eighty-seven South Mace on the barn. Additions and new builds are not altering the historical resource. Think about where else to put the skylights.
I want skylights. I got, I need to put in. No, not visible.
Right, so when I combine those things, that's where I have a problem.
Okay, are you suggesting I defer this to a five person board goes here? I haven't heard Virginia's opinion. Chris, I'm still not sure where he's at.
Well, we have a first and a second motion. I actually haven't called the vote yet, so.
He can, he does.
That would be a.
I don't know where your people's positions are on the work.
I'm not particularly supportive of the status.
Okay, so you should, you should probably.
Yeah, don't worry. I hope you're next. Thank you, John.
Okay, well.
Yeah. The appointment.
Oh.
I mean, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about, right now, we're at full, four, full time. There's only four full time members. There will be an appointment for a fifth member. That's how we're going to board.
Before the June meeting.
Right.
Virginia won't be here.
Not, and there's not.
Okay. Right, but there's going to be five people, five full time members for the next appointment.
So two, two.
So there's gonna be five.
Okay. So um, we could make a proposal to accept his attic window because right now he doesn't have an attic window. He just got, you know, I mean.
All and accepting that. Are you okay with waiting?
They, I do need an answer on the skylights, but uh, what I would need, I would prefer an approval. And I, I drew the conflict here. It sounds like it would be best to continue this discussion and. If there's any additional information, that would be helpful if I present in the future, um, let me know.
Would sizing with smaller uh, or different locations? How's change your mind? It's challenging just because of the nature of it. I mean, it's gonna be very visible from the public way. And I mean, every single discussion in the guidelines around roofs. Explicitly call out avoiding skylights. The, the addition or removal of dormers, the alteration of the character of the roof. Every single one says avoid skylights. And that's, that's where I feel like it, and that's just where I'm hung up, yeah.
Yeah, but we don't know which plenty of skylights in the village.
I'd like them to make a motion that we approve the attic window replacement. And that we table, I don't think that's a separate one, but. That we table the skylight discussion until next month and there's five. And the rest of the application.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dobroski?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next month, then we'll see what your opinions are.
You can still connect with Steve around your permanent residence. You can still connect with Steve around your permanent zone.
Okay, I'll just see if I can. Thank you. All right, thank you for the, the start.
Thank you.
Um, there is. There is a, so. The difference between sleeping and sleeping, which they sign though. And what they thought, um, role of topic. And I can.
I'll read through this. Okay, so we have three member items tonight, um, first on the, um. Agenda is the Gaskin Award. So this was something that I was like.
You don't need to do this, yes.
Um, Gaskin Award, well, we, uh, we'll probably make a motion, it might be good, okay, so if you want to leave, will you advise us on how to, um.
Oh.
Award.
I, I, I didn't attach it back, I don't believe, so I think, I would think, I mean, you figure.
The only thing that I would ask you is if this needs to be voted upon. Um, decision, and how that vote should take place, we'll probably discuss the four, uh, finalists. Um, and then, do, do we just come to conclusion, or do we do like a roll call on all four?
I would, you come to a conclusion, could it?
That's number.
Put it to the vote.
Okay.
There's also a question of where you want to present your work. Uh, uh, there was a question.
So, yeah, I'll open this up to the board, so obviously May is preservation month. And there was, uh, discussion of having the award presented during a trustees meeting that's being held, um.
The twenty-seventh.
Oh, man, or we push it to June and we present the award ahead of historic preservation board. I personally would, I could talk about this last, if you guys want to go, or I can talk about it first.
I'm just gonna put it out this way, I feel like we can feel good about choosing the winner during preservation month. And if the presentation of the award is not necessarily then, that may be a moot point.
Well, preservation board members could be present for the few moments.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Fifty-first.
Awarded.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be better to preserve, to present it during the month of May.
Okay.
I do too, and I think it's appropriate for the trip, please.
Who's meeting today?
It's May twenty-seventh, um, we now meet at six P M. for the trustees. And so, uh, as it was mentioned, it could be first on the agenda, so. Could be in and out.
Perfect, yeah, I'm, I'll know. I like that.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Sort of, it could be a joint meeting.
Yeah, then, then do we have to stay?
No, 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 just that, just that portion only could be a, a joint meeting in which. Um, the HPP does the presentation and the trustee.
Yes.
Perfect.
And it.
I probably foresee your liaison wanting to introduce. The segment.
Yeah.
Sponsoring it, yeah.
Um, okay, great, then we'll, we'll put that on the calendar for May twenty-seventh at six P M., and hopefully we will go first. Um, now let's discuss the four applicants.
Actually, we'll put the freedom back, cause you're asking if you were needed anymore. Uh, I just wanted to bring up something that might be more appropriate in this ready to be full board, but. If we wanted to make a rule or an informal rule, was that, is, is there something that needs to be done, or is that something that needs to be voted on, or is it just something that we agree upon? In terms of how we handle something.
I think it should be a formal action of the board, it's seriously have to be a, a bigger rule.
Uh, uh, Dan, I brought this up before you were here, but the reason I'm bringing it up is, uh. Sutherland, right, like, it actually almost just happened in this meeting, right? We, we are more than accommodating to say, hey, yeah, let's, let's figure out a special meeting, pull everybody to come here. But is there really a need for there to be a special meeting? And, and particularly, what, what is it, forty-something Sutherland, where, you know, they, they, they. Bemoaned us having a special meeting, cause they wanted to break ground before frost, and they still have a broke ground.
Yeah, five shots.
So, I, I just thought that it would be appropriate, if we establish some burden of proof. That, yeah, uh, they want to break down on June first, okay, well, can we get some correspondence from the builder or something like that? Before we go bend it backwards to accommodate that request.
Yeah, well, you know, that, I think that's the human trust factor, and it's, it's unfortunate if their plans change, but if they say we'll break ground in June, you know, it's that fact. We can't say prove it, uh, you know, we can, but there is the trust factor of, um, you know, our time's valuable, so is theirs. Um, and, you know, we're dedicated to this village and, and serve on this board to better the village. And if that's what the applicant wants, then that's what the applicant, that's what we want to give the applicant, but I do understand where you're coming from.
Look, we're not talking about anything outside of our normal meetings, which are already pre-planned in normal cadence, we're talking about us having special meetings, sometimes the special meetings help. Us to like take a breather on the application, have them go get some information, have them re-ram, if, if they were like, fine, and work out an application now, it might be, it might be harder. I think it's different, we're requesting a special meeting versus they are asking us to expedite things.
Yeah.
Because we just, cause they didn't bring enough information.
Yeah.
And so now we have to show up again because they didn't bring enough.
My feeling about it, sorry, go ahead.
The application form is quite clear about what information they need to provide, if they don't provide it. They didn't know what it's for. Or they didn't need to see ahead of time.
So then.
It's not always, though, that they didn't provide something, sometimes it's, you know, we ask for extra time to look at something, so. Uh, but my feeling about it is. You know, people, we have to assume positive intent, people are not just calling special meetings because they're able, they're. You know, they're trying to get something done, but a lot of shit happens in construction, and people, you know, go and make a contract with somebody else, and you're stuck. So, I, I just feel like that's a lot of extra bureaucracy to manage. For very little gain, like, how many special meetings have we had, maybe three or?
Well, I also just think about it from the perspective of availability, right, like, you know, we're, we're supposed to be a full board, we, we were supposed to meet deliberately for five people. And we, we, I mean, you guys met to do these windows at noon on Friday. Like, is there the appropriateness of that? Cause we keep, like, you know, how many special meetings have we done?
Okay, Chris, let's move on to, let's move on to the Gaskin.
Yeah, so, I didn't want, I didn't want to like drag on that, but I was.
So, let's, let's discuss the Gaskin.
So, I would handle it on a basis check. Yeah, you know, if, if. You got a bad vibe? Yeah, put it out, get a good vibe. Do it.
Yeah. Okay, what do we like on the Gaskin Award?
Oh.
All four of them are great.
By now, they really are.
Drawn, drawn.
Honestly, I'm, I'm a big fan of, uh, um, Twenty-Five Monroe, uh. Not just from the attention to detail, but the visibility of it, you know, like, the garage was done great on Main Street. Uh, but it's, you know, it, it's a fleeting detail, it's not architecturally relevant, visible. You, you know, that I think is what makes it particularly more beneficial for their.
I'm leaning towards either Twenty-Six Bowden or Sixty-Seven South Maine, and for a very selfish reason, which is. Both of those things are people who took it on themselves to actually. Create something that was historically accurate, like to take something that wasn't quite right and to fix it and make it. Restore it as opposed to just do an addition or something.
Everybody good night.
Good night.
Bye.
How's it going?
And, uh, that's kind of the behavior that we want to reward.
So, I like that point, I agree.
You got me?
Yeah, and, and it's process of elimination, well, I went in eighty-seven south, and now we're down to three. Okay, okay, so that's.
Don't go, I'm gonna go to the restroom.
Uh, the stuff too. Um, I'm in agreement with all three, I think that it, for all four, I believe that eighty-seven south. As far as historic preservation, they did a great job of materials, all right, they did a very good job, it was a demolition, um, it's kind of big, there's metal roofs, um. So let's remove eighty-seven and then move on to.
Can I, can I take some of them?
Yeah.
Twenty-six Bowden. Went through the most. Of all of that patient, of what that couple went through to, to redo that home back to original, the windows, the wood storms, I mean, they. Uh, what they had to go through for contractors and to make the home right, uh, of all those. Is probably the most extensive renovation of, of all your applicants.
But, are we talking about interior stuff that we can't, that we didn't save? They pulled out every single window and had wooden windows and had them restored, and then had, and then built, um, the, the storms.
The storms are beautiful.
That's like a, that's, that's just a labor in law, right?
And honestly, to, like, what we were deliberating tonight, right, like, it wasn't to modernize it, it wasn't to, it wasn't a function thing, just because I. I want to live here, make it more livable, it was literally just aesthetic.
Yeah.
Which, in the end of days, is all we did.
They preserved for the history.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about preserving exactly, and, and restoring back to the original, which, I, I think that. I mean, that's the behavior we want, that's what we want to call out, right?
Well, I think that the, uh. The other two, Twenty-five Monroe and Sixty-Seven South Maine, um, are both excellent projects, but. Yeah, but I think they's. Your candidates about just. Doing the right thing, just because it's the right thing to do, I think, applies to Sixty-Seven South, they took off all. Funny shutters that were inappropriately installed, um. And I really like your sun, but I don't. I don't like that it's painted.
Yeah, that's funny you say that, I thought they could have done a little bit better detail on the paint, um, and coloring, and. Yeah, they, they, there were some renovations that were borderline. It's, there were some restoration that were borderline renovations, which is what we tried not to do, right, my thing is to, to change, they changed the roof size. Their applicant was great, and he did a lot of really good.
Yes.
Research, and, uh, the windows were right, he came back a few times, cause he changed the, uh. Millions in between, like a half an inch, so we want it to be approval, so, again, he was, that's one function of a form, yeah, and, and so.
Well, again, it was an addition, and it's not a hundred percent, because largely, they, they, you know, they just made it look reasonable.
Oh, that was an addition, didn't he close Anaspace?
Yeah.
It had been a funky little.
Yeah, yeah.
On the back of his house.
Yeah.
Which could have been torn down, and that would have been appropriate too.
Well, so let's go, let's, we'll, we'll, we'll move on from Twenty-Five Monroe, is what a great job you did, so we'll go between Twenty-Six Bowden and Sixty-Seven Maine. Um, and, and for me, the. The shutters are beautiful, um, but this, when it comes down to two almost. Preserved homes and, um, the right, you know, uh, state of mind in, in, for both applicants. Just the amount of effort and, um, details and. Preserving the history of this beautiful home on Bowden. Yeah, I think they're, I think they, they might take the slide out in last.
It's the scale of the project, and it's also, they, they did the right thing.
Yeah.
For how many times do we have people come in here who want windows?
Yeah.
All right, yeah. All right, all right, we're on agreement.
Yeah, I'm on that bottom, but. Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to, um, say goodbye, because I don't need.
The June.
Um, yeah, I mean, do you want to make the last motion for this one, or what?
And, I'm the only board of a newer, served.
Yeah.
President of Gaskin.
All the more appropriateness.
I make a motion to, um. Recognize Twenty-Six Bowden for our first annual Gaskin Award.
Second.
Member Dubrasky?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Cyril?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, guys.
Thank you for being there.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yeah. Experience and perspective is always welcome.
Sit the door.
Okay. She invited.
Thanks for joining her.
Sure.
Uh, okay, now, do you need your vote to close the meeting?
I don't think, yeah, I was like, I don't think. Yeah.
So, let's talk about, uh, board training, so, um. I need, this, this is where Alexandria has all of us.
Share that, no, I'm just kidding.
Do the certificates I have done, no?
So we started a new training cycle that has gone by very quickly. Um, your training was last year.
Got it.
Yeah, not this training cycle.
I watched both of those videos.
Yep, and so there's a.
This out.
I saw it in my life.
Thank you, so.
You sent some videos on, on, to email, yeah?
Yeah, recently, there are two window videos, and they're two hours, so, right up your alley.
The, the first one is with Steve Jordan, the author of that book here in Rochester, and a John, uh, like Brett, I believe his name is from Dallas. And that, the first of the two is very, very good, for preserving windows.
Okay.
The second one. On the record, you just gotta get through it for your hour credit, and it's good, and there's some good bits and pieces there, but the first one is, is very much more.
Two hour video for an hour credit?
No, no, that's true.
Yeah, there, and you could watch them on one point five speed, you know, you just gotta get through it, get through it, yeah.
And then there's multiple other, um.
Um, videos.
It's just the self certification.
Yeah, I've seen the self certification, I've sent like a. Document that has hyperlinks of videos, kind of just like some reminders too, about like. Being on a board and board engagement in general, outside of historic preservation, so. As we're talking about this, I will put that back in front of you guys, that longer list.
Okay, and to you, that's what I'm reading on this report, yeah.
You have been?
Oh, I have to.
It's effective June first, so maybe.
That's why I asked you earlier, I was like, we, we, we can be, because that video was available, hold on.
I'm sorry, I did not know that, I didn't, no, I'm sorry, I asked.
Okay, I'll get them to you immediately.
Okay, all right.
When are the four hours due?
September thirtieth.
Okay.
So we start October, going through the next September, cause that's when our CLG. Our reporting audit period is recognized, and so I just keep it consistent with. This board and the planning and zoning board trainings, so everyone's on the same page.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
What do I need to know about the June meeting?
I, just a reminder that we moved June to Tuesday.
Oh.
It's Tuesday, the seventeenth, well, I wasn't gonna be here on the sixteenth, and you guys graciously.
Oh.
Said that we could do it on the seventeenth at six thirty, so, it was just a reminder.
Oh, yeah, I thought of that.
And it's already updated on the website too, so. If anyone asks.
Uh, and then final comment, it's just going back to, uh, Cork and Circle. We could definitely use some homework and research on what's appropriate on that, I hope.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I don't, I struggle with that. You know, it's like, oh, and you have a mid-century house, like.
Let us back.
Why are you trying to look at something that's not, and can we just say that to people, like, no?
Time to say, yeah.
No, but we kept on like going on and on about the materials, and it's really not about the materials or even the design elements on the column, it's just like. No, it's not, it's not, this, the design is not appropriate for them.
Yeah, so let's do a little homework, and then hopefully we can advise, uh, her in, in the right direction. Motion, please. Second motion.
Member Torres?
I don't.
Member Dubrasky?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.